Pleased to meet you.
Good morning.
United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And good evening. Before we begin, I'm going to just read a quick statement that will now be read at the start of all of our meetings, I believe. This meeting of the Burlington Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Thank you. All right, 6:33, citizens' time. Anybody in the room would like to come up and say anything? Online, Mrs. O'Brien, good evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Young, Three Valley Circle.
I was recognizing Patricia O'Brien by sawing her hand up. I can come to you second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, thanks, Chair Priest. I just have two items tonight. One is I wanted to thank John Keely for the Weinberg watershed flood and urban heat island assessment report, and I would ask the Select Board to take as strong a leadership position as possible in areas where they can and to do that in short time. I noticed that some of the timeframes are two to five years, and so I know it takes a lot to plan, but I would ask for your strongest leadership possible in these areas to protect residents and businesses from flooding and heat island impacts. The second is that you're discussing drought irrigation systems, and I would just like to ask the Board to remember to reflect on the criteria number three, water conservation that we agreed to when we were approved for the inter-basin transfer. There are 12 items that the town had agreed to comply with, and I just want to make sure that we're reviewing this. It seems like an opportunity to implement some of their suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for my inexperience with the system. All I saw was myself and the host, so apologize for jumping in earlier. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. What prompted me to want to reach out tonight was an article in the Boston Herald four days ago, September 22nd, Thursday, and the title of it was that basically that they were dropping their entrance fees for local communities to join their water system, and they're pretty substantial. I've been a homeowner in the town for quite a while. I have been, I know where, we got some issues with PFAS chemicals. I get the mailings, I'm very concerned. I believe this body, if I'm not mistaken, voted in the affirmative a number of years ago to tie into the MWRA. What I don't know is this, is all of the water in Burlington affected by PFAS, that particular chemical?
I didn't quite catch that question. Do anybody else?
Currently, the Mill Pond water has the PFAS chemical. MWRA water does not. That was his question.
Okay. Mr. Young, did you hear?
Yeah, I'm sorry you're having trouble hearing me. My question is, I understand MWRA water does not have it. I'm trying to find out is if all the water in Burlington is affected by PFAS?
Yes, and the short answer is yes. And the reason that is is because when the state lowered their threshold, although all the water that was affected that was previously not considered contaminated by PFAS became contaminated by that is parts per billion, trillion. Thank you.
You can ask Mr. Young, he can please give me a call in the office, I'd be happy to go through it with him in more detail.
Okay.
It's time with a lot.
So, so Mr. Young, in short, that's my 10-second response, but if you'd like to give Mr. Sagarino a call, he can elaborate tomorrow for you.
Okay, and that's the town manager?
Yes, Town Administrator Paul Sagarino.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Anybody else for citizens' time? Okay, moving on. First up, we have an appointment of special police officer. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I am before you to request the appointment through the Town Administrator of Lieutenant Tim McDonough to the position of special police officer. As of October 1st, Tim will be retiring from full-time service with the department. And just to give you a little review of Tim's career, although these are just highlights, certainly I could say more. Tim was originally appointed to the department on March 28th of 1988. He graduated from the Somerville Police Academy in July of 1988. He began as a patrolman. In 1990 through 2017, he was assigned to the NEMLEC SWAT and RRT team where he was a team leader and handled probably hundreds of cases that would go towards his resume, certainly. He was then promoted to sergeant on July 19th, 2005, and took over as the Drug Unit Supervisor in '08. In the interim there, he also became the OIC of the Firearms and Defensive Tactics Training Unit for the department, which you've heard myself and Chief Kent and many others come before you and talk about our training and the level of training we have here in Burlington. And I can tell you without reservation that Lieutenant Tim McDonough is the one who stepped it off in the right direction and has put us on the place where we are today. He handled that assignment through November of 2021, and he was then promoted to lieutenant on June 11th, 2018. Since approximately 2011, he has been the Assistant Accreditation Manager for the department, and he also serves as a State Mass Police Accreditation Commission Assessor, where he goes out to different departments amongst the state and does the assessments, the peer review of their accreditation assessments. Tim has a master's degree in Criminal Justice Administration since October 2001. And to highlight some of the commendations that he received, and there's been many, but probably the most deserving of the recognition is 2007, he is a recipient of the State Hanner Award. The Hanner Award is one of the, probably the top awards that you can get at the state level. Tim was honored as a result of a hostage situation while he was serving on the NEMLEC SWAT team. This situation happened in Groton, there was a standoff with an armed person where shots were fired for approximately two hours, and luckily through their intervention, nobody was injured. June of 2013, he received a commendation for assisting with the Boston Marathon as part of his NEMLEC duties. In 2016, he was again commended for his response to a homicide at a local hotel when he was running the Detective Division at the time. And then most recently in 2017, he received a recognition letter from Chief Kent for his years of service in NEMLEC when he retired from the NEMLEC SWAT team. So at this time, I would respectfully request the appointment of Lieutenant Tim McDonough to the position of special police officer, and Tim is here in the audience today for some well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and if I could, I'd like to say a few words. I've had the opportunity to work with Lieutenant McDonough over the past several years in particular, and he truly is a professional. He will be missed, but as great of a police officer is, he's even a better guy, and I just want to congratulate him on his well-deserved retirement. And with that, I'll make my appointment, and then you guys can, just wanted to steal a few words before you guys got into it. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Timothy McDonough to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Gentlemen?
Oh, let me begin, Mr.
Keep it clean, keep it clean.
If, if I could, as the chief said, on all the positivity that Tim has had over his 34-year career, I went to the academy with Tim, and he's the ultimate professional. I could go on for hours about all the good he's done. I could go on for hours about other stuff, but Tim, you're well-deserved retirement, trust me, it's a great club to join, and I just can't say enough about Tim as a police officer, as a friend, as a person. So congratulations on your retirement, and let the others speak now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, congratulations on your retirement. You know, we, our careers, me, the fire, you and the police sort of ran concurrently over the past 32 years, so I got to know you quite well. Attended numerous training sessions that you led, always did an outstanding job. I can tell you this, and I think everybody already knows, Tim is very, very well-liked and very, very well-respected, not only in the police department and the fire department, but across town. So again, thank you so much for your service to the community. I wish you nothing but the best in retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me just say this, I cannot say enough about you as a person. As far as your work goes, the chief has said everything that there is to go. I've never had to interact with you in a, in a work environment, so that part of it I don't know, but what everyone's told me and what I see around town is incredible. But as a person, as an individual, you're one hell of a guy, and I want to wish you nothing but the best for your retirement, for you, the family, whatever you're going to end up doing, so I can't wait to see you have a good time in life now. Not that you didn't before, but, because there was a few stories that Jimmy told me about earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer McDonough, for your many years of dedicated service to the town, very much appreciated, and I wish you the very best in your retirement and all your future endeavors. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You know, it's weird for me, right? Because I feel like for the past two years, I've been watching all the guys that my dad had worked with, that I knew growing up, retire. So it's a very surreal experience. I don't know if it's because I idolized you guys as a kid, that it feels strange to me to watch you all retire. But I knew growing up that you guys were keeping us safe, and that to me meant the world. And I know that, Chief, you're bringing on, you know, men and women who are doing the exact same thing for the kids of Burlington today, and it, I don't know, it sits someplace very special for me. So thank you for everything that you've done for this community, for every kid who grew up in this town and beyond, and enjoy every day from here to the end, because, I mean, you deserve every friggin' second of it. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Congratulations, Mr. Brown, all the best.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Want a picture?
What's that? Yeah, you want to do a picture real quick before you head back? Let's do it.
Sorry. You're welcome.
Speaking of pausing. Swing around front, let's go.
With us?
Well, I mean, either way. Take this picture with the chief.
Okay. You guys first, or do I have to join?
Which you watch.
I got some things.
We have to get back into more of a family. We used to do things before the pandemic, I thought it got me away from that a little bit.
I'll send them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I just want to say real quick, I believe Chief Brown is my sixth chief. Wow. And I know that says for my age as well, I guess, but the town is a good answer, and you guys are good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six chiefs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Six chiefs.
I'd say something, I think the town's only had like 11 chiefs. All right, moving on, we got 6:35 DPW appointment.
Good evening, Brian White, DPW Operations Manager. Here to provide recommendations to fill two of the current vacancies within the department. The first is for the Water System Maintenance Craftsman. On September 21st, Matt Davis, Water and Sewer Superintendent, and myself completed interviews for the position of Water System Maintenance Craftsman. This vacancy, if you remember, is, well, actually, this vacancy is a result of the departure of Chris Hayes, who has served the town in their last employment since 2018. So briefly on that note, we would like to thank Chris for his time with us. He provided us with many years of hard work and dedication, and wish him well on his future endeavors. So after review of qualifications, I'm here to recommend Chris Lavoy for this position. Mr. Lavoy has been employed in the Department of Public Works with the Highway Division since 2014 as a special motor equipment operator. He possesses a CDL B license and hoisting licenses 2A, 1B, 4E, and 4G, all of which are required. So Chris is not present as this is a lateral transfer within the department. Although this is a lateral transfer, the position requires separate types of skills which we believe Chris can obtain and excel at.
Thank you, Brian. With Brian's recommendation, I appoint Chris Lavoy to the position of Water System Maintenance Craftsman in the DPW Water and Sewer Division, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0.
Thank you. So the second position is for the Highway Division, is Special Motor Equipment Operator. On September 20th, Kevin Keane, Highway Superintendent, John Sanchez, DPW Director, and myself conducted interviews for this position. This vacancy is a result of all the recent transfers that have been kind of taking place within the department. After review of qualifications, I'm recommending the position be appointed to Greg Anthony Silvestro for the position of Special Motor Equipment Operator in Highway Division. Mr. Silvestro's experience includes some work with cemetery and parks for the city of Medford, in addition to experience driving CDL Class B trucks as a delivery driver. He recently returned to Massachusetts after working in Florida, and he wishes to return to municipal work. He possesses a CDL Class A license and is currently pursuing the hoisting licenses necessary for this position, many of which he had previously possessed prior to moving to Florida. We believe Greg will be a great addition to the department. He is in the audience tonight, as well as a few other members from the DPW here to support him.
Thank you, Brian. With Brian's recommendation, I appoint Greg Anthony Silvestro to the position of Special Motor Equipment Operator in the DPW Highway Division, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Congratulations. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Have a good night.
You too. All right, 6:36, water restriction fine structure. Rachel, come on down.
Hello, Rachel Leonardo, DPW Business Manager, here to talk about all things water. So first up is in regards to our water restriction fine structure. Recently, we've been observing the fine structure of other towns and believe that Burlington's could use an upgrade. As it stands, in Town Bylaw Section 5.9, the penalty for the first outdoor water restriction violation is a written warning. The second violation is a $50 fine, and the third and subsequent violations are $100 per day of violating the water ban. What we're proposing is that we stick with the first two, so it's just a written warning, and then after a seven-day period, we move to a $50 fine, and after another seven-day period, we move to a $300 fine over the course of those seven days. So we're just looking for feedback tonight, not looking to vote on anything, but this is a bylaw change, so we will be proposing this to the bylaw committee.
Okay. Joe, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Hey, Rachel, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. Went over this quickly today, yesterday, whatever. Talk to you very quickly about the second violation where it says $50 fine after a seven-day period. So if I'm understanding this right, the way it's written, after seven days, they get a $50 fine, what happens in between that first day and that seventh day if they keep watering?
So basically, we allow for seven days because we have to think about getting the mailing out and getting the post office a chance to reach the residents. If we find that after seven days, because we've learned from, you know, those return addresses that we get, that is enough time for us to get the mailing out and for the post office to receive and deliver the mail. If they're still watering after seven days, we take that as ignoring our warning, and then they get that first $50 fine. And same with the current structure of the $100 is if after another seven days, they're still watering, then we send the $100 per day.
Okay, so the same violation is for the third one where it says $300, and they have seven days, right?
It's a little different than as it currently stands, so if we see that in seven days, you've watered every single day, that's currently seven $100 fines, so it's $700. But we're proposing that we switch it to a $300 fine.
So we'll lose money. Not that we're trying to make money, I shouldn't say it that way. I apologize to everyone listening, and to everyone I just said that to. We're not here to make money, but if you go with this, if we decide, this is open discussion, this is just discussion now, so if we have a $300, $300 fine for the fine after a seven-day period, they keep watering, right, then it's $300 for that seven days, and they're still watering for seven days.
Correct.
Right? Okay. I personally don't agree with that at all.
What would you propose?
I would propose a $300 fine and take that right out of there completely.
Okay.
And then have a $300 fine every time they water.
So kind of replacing what our current structure is and just up it to $300?
It's what it is, and our fines are regulated on water usage, right, is what they regulate on. If somebody's on vacation, like we've heard a couple times, our water ban usually starts long before water season does, what I mean? So if they can't figure out when the water ban is, that's, part of this has to go back to them on their responsibility, not just the town. And you know, we've sat in here before with some people that have come in, you know, trying to argue the water ban thing, so I don't agree with that at all. That gives them a full seven days to water for $300, is what, basically they're saying. And there's people in town that we've all heard it, doesn't matter, I gotta water anyway. Well, let's see if you can still afford the $300 every single time, because it's not about the, it's about the water pressure, people just don't get that yet. They don't get that the water pressure's not there for fires and everything else. So I would be against that writing on this.
Okay, thank you.
Just, we put that in your notes for wherever, wherever we decide to vote on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. What's one thing I want to ask? So did, did we ever find out through council, town council or otherwise, what, because I know that there's like, we can't just go charging like $10,000, right? Like there has to be like a reasonable understanding of what the cost, so like, is there like a limit to, in this particular case, what we're allowed to charge? I put that in massive air quotes?
No, there is no limit. However, we do have an update for what's happening with those residents that continue to ignore fines and violations and continue to abuse the water system. We're working with town council right now, and basically, we're going to be sending letters to the handful of people that we've kind of had endless communications with and won't stop watering, and the letters will say, you know, you have X amount of time to pay, you're outstanding fines, and if you don't, we will be taking you to court.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rachel, is it, is US mail the only way we're allowed to communicate this, or are there other avenues of notifying residents? To follow up on Joe's point, you know, if they get instant notification, why do we have the seven days? In other words, is there another way of notifying them other than the US mail?
For the most part, if I have somebody's email address, I do reach out by email. Phone is a little fishy because you can't have any proof that you spoke with them, you know, it's just your word. Businesses, what we've been doing is sending in, you know, the Water and Sewer Superintendent with the violation letter if they're unresponsive and handing it to them themselves, but, I mean, we can't touch mailboxes, it's federal property, and you could tape something to somebody's door, and again, they could say, I never received it. So the mail is the strongest way we have, because we've been doing return services on every mailing we have, so if they don't receive it physically, it gets bounced right back to us and we record it.
That was my second question. All right, thank you.
Thank you. This is, Mr. Chairman, is this for January town meeting, is that what you hope to get it?
Yes.
Okay, so won't be seen in September. I'm a little softer on the seven-day period than Joe is. I tend to give folks the benefit of the doubt, and is, and like we, we've seen in the past, people claim to have been out of town or out of the country or out of touch, basically, but I would be, I don't know, I'd like to give that a little more, a little more discussion on the seven-day waiver period, but otherwise, I'm fine with increasing the fines, it's pretty obvious that a lot of folks are fine with paying the $100 and continuing to water, so, yeah, we need to, I think that we've learned quite a bit this year. Yeah, it's good, Rachel, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm for anything that kind of increases compliance, and if this is what we have to do, then this is what we have to do. I know we're gonna have further discussion on it, but I'd like to think about the amounts and the period, but if what we have is not working, we should try and change it and improve it. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Have a follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a follow-up to the mail question. If we know someone's a habitual offender, they've gotten the warning, they've gotten the $100, what's the possibility of notifying them on the third violation by next day mail? So that it's notifications, whether it be FedEx or whatever, something just to get them the word faster, so we know, you know, we know they're getting it, but we know they're getting it faster, we're not giving them the seven days again.
That's an excellent point, I'll definitely write that down. I'm not sure the answer to it, but we could totally look into it.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess where, where I sit on this is, you know, it seems like this year, I don't know if it feels like it's more than most, or, you know, it's just a perception, you know, from where we're sitting, it feels like there's an increase in people who are taking a more cavalier approach to how they're deciding to ignore the water ban, which is frustrating because it puts the town in a compromising position. Other residents who are following it, you know, start to feel like, well, you know, if they're not following, why do I have to follow it? Right? And it creates, you know, kind of a sense of lack of community. You know, I kind of wonder if the second violation needs to be $100, and then the third and subsequent violations are the $300 or $400, with the hope that at the second violation, we are curbing the behavior, and then for serious repeat offenders who just aren't catching our drift, we've increased it to a substantial amount, because to a conversation that we had weeks ago at this point, you know, people are paying, let's say $7,000 to have a certain section of their lawn sowed it, right? They'd rather pay $2,000 in fines to keep that watered and not lose the $7,000 investment. So, you know, from my perspective, we have to curb the behavior by making the punishment match, you know, or come close to what they're getting away with essentially. I don't know, I mean, again... I mean, again, this is discussion, so I mean, you know, feel free to-
I'm gonna jump in.
Paul?
Mr. Chairman, uh, we have to have the warrant articles submitted, uh, by approximately October 25th to have it count for the January town meeting, uh, so we can certainly, we have two more meetings to take a, take a crack on this with, uh, the feedback that we've heard, uh, from the board today. If there's any additional feedback, you know, please, uh, share with us now, and we can, uh, you know, do some more work on it and bring it back, um, at one of our upcoming meetings in October, and we'll still have time to submit it for the January meeting.
Great. Joe, go ahead.
So very quick, just to go on, Jim, Jim, Jim said, I think I heard it one other time too, I find it very, very hard to believe that in this town, people don't know there's a water ban. When they come in front of us for a, um, a fix or can, can somebody can reduce this, every place I go, Shaw's Capital Grill once. Cafe Esca Grill, um, it doesn't matter where we, where I go, that's all it's ever talked about is the water in this town. So it's very hard for me to have compassion for someone that's out there watering their grass when the neighbors is brown on both sides and they're watering their grass, 'cause they don't give two hoots about what's going on. So I have a really, really hard time with that. Um, so I, I'm not gonna have compassion on that side of it. And I just feel like, listen, there's a bunch of us in this room that do the right thing all the time, and yeah, we all make mistakes, but when you water your grass seven days a week at 2,300 gallons at a time, there's something wrong with that. You know? Everyone talks about, let's be one town. Well, how come we're not one town on this issue? It's just my feeling.
Anybody else?
I know one, shut up.
All right, well, if there's, if there's no further discussion, we'll, we'll put it back on for, uh, the next meeting, uh, to continue discussion. Um, and, uh, I wonder, i- is there, is there anything else we can be doing? I feel like, I mean, sure, we can drive this up to another meeting for more discussion, we can all think on it further, but, you know, I don't know, like, is it, I, I don't know where I'm going with this, I'm just trying to say, like, is there anything else we can be doing at the next meeting, uh, to, to expand the conversation? Mike?
I have a quick question for Rachel, if I can. So Rachel, I know, um, is it phase 2B of the connection's gonna be done in the spring? We have the 3.5 million gallons per day?
2A.
2A, sorry. Um, will that have any impact on the water usage? Are we still gonna be super tight with our capacity and usage once that's completed?
Uh, we will definitely be more comfortable. However, when we made the connection to the MWR, we also joined what's called the Water Resources Commission, and they're really big on water conservation regardless of your water source, and we, you know, made this promise with them that we would continue to enforce the every-other-day water ban. It's really all you need, other than when you do put down that fresh sod or you're attempting to grow a new lawn. Um, so we're just gonna be conscious, for environmental reasons, that we should remain on that every-other-day water ban.
Yeah, that's a really great point, too, because I think that, like, people are expecting, you know, the pipe to open and everyone just to, you know, start throwing water around like it's, you know, uh, an infinite resource, and it's not.
Make it rain.
But they're gonna make it rain. Fire hydrant style, we're doing it old school. Um, I think folks need to understand that, you know, even when this connection is fully complete, we're not gonna just open all the faucets and, you know, have ourselves a grand old time, like, we need to still conserve water. We still need to be responsible with the resources we're provided. Um, you know, and I mean, again, like, I, I guess, like, beyond us just, like, fining people, I feel like, you know, like, is there any kind of educational effort we can do? You know, do we have to, I don't know, hold a town hall, let people come yell at us, and then we can yell at them? I don't know. Um, I'm just trying to think bigger than the dollar amount, because that's just us dealing with the problem at the, at the backend. It's not us getting in front of the problem at all. And, I mean, granted, you know, I think that there's a certain population of folks who may just say, "Whatever, I don't care," um, but there's gotta be a way to, you know, help folks understand. That's all. All right, gentlemen, if there's nothing else, uh, we will continue to, oh, Paul, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest maybe we take the meeting of October 24th, given our next meeting is actually a week away on, on-
Oh, right, okay.
Not a lot of time in between there, so.
All right, then let's continue this till October 24th, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll see what happens. All right, uh, Rachel, you're sticking around, right?
Sure.
637, irrigation water rate structure during drought?
So this could be a potential, um, help in education for people who, uh, like to use a lot of water in the summer off of their irrigation meters. Um, we're actually proposing that those with second water meters that are typically used for irrigation systems and, um, sometimes filling pools, that we have a new drought rate structure when the state declares a critical level-three drought or worse. Um, so if you look at, I had a handout, I came up with a tiered system based on what we currently have, and each tier is incremental. Um, so tier one, we'd increase the rates by 10%, tier two, 20%, and so on and so forth. Um, so we think that this is another way to encourage residents, before it happens, to conserve their water, um, because even if, you know, we're on a water ban, even if you have a lawn exemption, you still have to pay for all the water that goes through your meter. Again, just looking for feedback, no vote required.
Yes, Jim, is no, no vote required on this? This is, um, uh, Public Works will be, would be asking you in the future, when they reset the rates to, to make a decision on this, but this is an idea now. I think, um, we had some feedback from the public during one of our meetings as to whether there's a way to incentivize people in other ways, and, uh, Rachel did some research and was able to come up with this, uh, methodology where, um, you know, you save yourself a few bucks by not watering as well. Um, as you can see, the proposal is pretty aggressive on i- if someone was to choose to, to continue watering. And again, no vote asking for tonight, just looking for, uh, thoughts and feedback from the board and, uh, a vote at a future date if the board wants to continue, um, along this path.
Sure. Gentlemen, thoughts? Jim?
Just real quick, if you wanna take a look, just might wanna tweak that last number in the tier, the number in the last tier.
The $20 number?
No, no, the bottom tier, that number might need to be tweaked a little.
Wait, what? Sorry.
Need to be tweaked, there's a couple, there's an extra zero.
Oh, extra zero there.
Yeah. Just so that, you know, people don't question it. That's all.
Thank you.
That's all.
Gentlemen, anything else? Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Rachel, uh, if you can remind me, I'm a little unfamiliar with the levels, how often do we get to a level-three drought? Have we, was that the one we were just in? Are we currently in a level-three?
We're still in it, yes.
How long have we been in the three?
June 21st.
Does it happen every year, it seems like?
No, uh, this is-
It's just a, a rare case.
Rare year.
Just a lucky special year.
Yeah, it's been so wonderful. Um, but yeah, it's, it, it's been a, a little while. I think it, this is my first, uh, full drought, full water ban with the town. I've been here for five years, so.
Okay. So this is just a really, uh, tight, rough year on the drought, and we hit level-three for the first time in five years, so these aren't, this isn't gonna be like a, an annual thing we hit, it's just extreme conditions?
That's correct, yeah. We hope we, we never have to hit a drought like this again, honestly, um, but we just wanna be prepared.
I got you. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Joe?
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just lost train of thought. That's terrible, I'm getting old. All right, the question I have was, on these new water rates that we're gonna talk about later or, or look at, um, what is the average person that's watering right now? Is it 2,300 gallons? Is it 3,000 gallons? Do you know that by any chance?
Nobody should be watering right now, Joe.
I know that, I understand that, but the ones-
That's the correct answer.
Let me rephrase that.
Yeah, I think, um, I would say people who have the full irrigation systems at their home, I would say about 1,500 to 1,800 gallons when they water their, all of their zones.
Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, please, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, this one caught my attention over the weekend when I was looking at this, kind of uncomfortable about just, uh, raising the rates across the board simply because there's a drought. Um, my, my concern is there are plenty of law-abiding citizens in, in town who play by the rules, and, uh, you know, like everything else, there's, you know, a few that ruin it for the rest of us. So by, you know, just arbitrarily raising the rate during the drought, um, I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with.
I will reiterate that this is only for second meters.
If there was a, I mean, if there was some, if there was some additional cost or something that we incurred during the drought and could justify raising the rate on everybody who has a second meter, um, I'd, I'd like, I'd have some second thoughts on that. That's all.
Okay.
Do we know the percentage of residents that have a second meter?
I'm not off the top of my head. If you email me tomorrow, I can get that for you.
Okay, I was just curious, no, it's not now.
Let's also point out for the board, there's a metric that, um, I think is used statewide for how many gallons an average household uses in a year, and we'll, we'll get that for you for the next one. Is it 90,000 or do you do a lot of the surveys statewide?
I, I think it's less.
All right, well, we'll get that for the board, so they just have a sense of sort of what's a, an average household supposed to be using for water.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any other, uh, questions, comments at this, at this point in time? All right, so then we'll, we'll move this to October 24th as well, keep it together.
Yep.
Um, and we'll discuss it again. All right.
Thank you, Rachel.
Rachel, thanks so much. All right, moving along to 638, we've got, uh, Cable Access Committee. Uh, you, you're doing this, Paul?
Yeah, mine. Um, and again, uh, thank you to everybody who's helped, helping get the word out about our lack of volunteers, uh, this committee. We do have another volunteer for the Cable Access Advisory Committee, uh, Mr. Jack Kelly. And so for that, I wish to appoint Jack Kelly to the Cable Advisory Committee and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Second. Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, cooking along to 639, we've got, uh, Disability Access Fund request.
Amy, it's good to see you. Thank you very much.
What do you have for us?
Well, um, the reason I'm here is, as the webmaster, um, I've been working with trying to get some solutions, some additional modules and things like that for the website. Um, this one that has come up is called AudioEye, which would allow us to have a higher capability with, um, disability access, making sure that more and more items on our, um, website comply. And initially, when you build a website, um, it's very easy to make sure that everything is in compliance, but as things get added and that type of stuff, people, I mean, we have a good number of people who are adding things to the website, um, our editors from different departments, and sometimes people are not so careful about making sure that things are in compliance, plus the rules for ADA change from time to time. So this, um, is a, um, service that comes from our web provider, Civic Plus, that will allow us to add this module in. And so I'd gone to Disability Access, um, because, um, they've been very gracious in the past with things like the, um, AutoMark, um, disability voting, um, marking machine, and so I asked them if this was something they thought fell into their use of the, um, parking fines and that kind of stuff, and so they agreed with that. Um, they did wanna say that they would just do a 12-month subscription to begin with, and then we can see how, um, that works, and, um, if that's, right now, that's the best tool that we can get, um, from, uh, Civic Plus, so we wanna just kinda go try that for a year and, and make sure that it works well.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions? Mike, you wanna start?
I, I, uh, I haven't got a clue what, what she's talking about.
At least he's honest.
Okay, no.
No, I have no, I have no questions, but I trust it's, uh, necessary, or we should have it.
Yeah, I mean, basically, um, there are things that can sometimes be added onto the website. Um, for instance, one of the very simplest things is oftentimes, um, like a PDF file, maybe scanned in, maybe wasn't a text file, so that somebody who's blind, their text reader does not read it. And so this, this, uh, module would then go in, modify that file so that it could be read by a text reader. Um, it also does help us with things, are we, when we designed this website, we really worked with, um, the vendor to make sure that we didn't, pictures are nice on a website, but they're not, for anybody with any kind of mobility problems, they're not very user-friendly. So this just, you know, um, this will help us with those types of attributes as well on a website.
Thank you.
Joe?
Oh, nothing.
Mike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, quick question, were we currently out of compliance with, um, with this kind of , uh, stuff?
There are certain parts of the website that are, and it's, this, what this tool just automates that process a little bit. Um, I have to spend a good deal of time just looking at what people have uploaded and converting it or working it, and this tool will just kind of automate that process. Um, it's one of those things that, you know, you can go out of compliance really easily by somebody adding five documents or five things that are not in compliance.
And also, technology's changing so fast all the time that it's tough to keep up.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
I, I just think it's a great way, uh, great use for the funds, and, uh, it'll help so many people for a small amount of money.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Is there a certain level of, like, compliance percentage that we're looking to aim for with this?
Um, well, the, uh, ADA has a compliance checklist. Um, I don't think they have levels, it's either all or nothing, so this will just kind of eliminate some of our little lingering problems.
Right. And does it, this is probably technical, but, like, how, like, how does, how does the software work? Is it, is it constantly scanning the site and?
Yeah, it's constantly monitoring the site, making corrections, making changes. Um, it has a reporting module out, so it will report, and then there, there is something by chance, um, that it can't fix. Like, it will, it will notify me that a video has been linked in, um, it can't go out to YouTube or something and fix that video, but it would report to me that that is something that we're linking to, and we need to put some kind of in-between piece to say, "This is now going to a video, and here's the video, um, address," um, so that somebody could still navigate around it and that type of stuff.
Okay. And then, um, just out of curiosity, how much for the 12-month subscription?
I'm sorry, what?
How much for the 12-month subscription?
For the 12-month is, uh, $3,500.
That's not bad at all. Okay.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Do all the department heads, Amy, have, uh, the ability to add documents and modify their pages, or does that have to go through you?
No, most, um, any department that wants to put on an editor is very welcome to do that. Um, they can monitor, and probably about half the departments do it themselves.
Okay.
And, um, the other people are ones that, you know, either they don't have somebody that's connect, wants to do it, and so they would just say, "Here's the document, please load it up."
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, there is one other thing that was asked- Um, there is one other thing that was asked.
Go ahead, you have one other thing. Go right ahead.
One other thing that was asked about, um, whether this, this dealt with, uh, languages. And, um, um, we had put, and we have the module already in there for Google Translator. It seems like we, somebody did an upgrade or something, and it's not up there currently. So I'm in the middle of, uh, getting that problem resolved. Um, so yeah, that is, it is possible to have that. Because that's another, that's the other part about accessibility, is that, you know, people that, uh, don't read or speak English well enough and would like to have it in their own language, um, it's very possible to do. It's very simple. And, um, it's, I, I was like, oh, that's missing. Where is it? And so I didn't get it fixed today, but it will be worked on this week.
Awesome.
One quick question, Amy. Um, the idea is fantastic, but over here, I don't know what page it is, one of the pages here, it says, uh, Service Order Cost. It says AutoEye manages thirty-five hundred per domain, and it's total. Is that the cost that you just said for the year? Or is it, is that two different costs for twelve months?
It says twelve months term of the top, but sometimes they can be a little bit tricky.
Yeah.
Is it thirty-five hundred for the domain and thirty-five hundred for the year?
It's thirty-five hundred for one dom, one domain for the full year. We only have one domain. It's all, it's all feeds off the same one.
Okay, thank you. Does, um, does, do the schools also use this for ADA compliance? Do we know?
I don't know what they use. I know that they do have, um, a ma, a tool, but they're using a different host. So I, I don't know exactly which tool, um, they're using.
Alrighty. Uh, gentlemen, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the Disability Access Fund for thirty-five hundred dollars for the, uh, one-year AudioEye services for the town of Burlington website.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Alright, uh, six forty, we've got, uh, an easement, uh, for sixteen Rear Briarwood Lane.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some housekeeping here. It's funny how long it takes some of these things to move around, but, uh, this is an easement that was approved by town meeting in May of two thousand seventeen. And, uh, the process requires both town meeting and select board approval. It was for, um, sixteen R Briarwood. And if, uh, the board members recall at the time, there was, I believe there was a home being built there in order to facilitate, uh, the driveway, proper driveway, uh, this easement was worked out with, between the property owner and the town. And there is a proposed motion within your packet. Uh, and again, this was, um, all voted by town meeting on Article twenty-sixth of May, two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, comments, thoughts? Anything? No? Okay. Well, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it is hereby moved that the board vote to adopt, sign, and have recorded the proposed grant of easement as submitted herewith with respect to a two-hundred-seventy-two square foot parcel of land owned by the town and located at the rear of sixty-one Center Street, Burlington, Mass. This proposed easement grants rights to the owners of a house located at sixteen R Briarwood Lane, Burlington, Mass, and their heirs, successors, and assignees to pass and repass over said parcel for purposes of accessing their property and for all others, other reasons that driveways are used in the town of Burlington. The proposed easement came before Burlington Town Meeting as Article twenty-sixth in May of two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting, and was approved by the board. That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Okay, uh, we got Warren Articles next, six forty-one. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we do have a couple more articles, uh, that we wish to have your vote on, uh, in addition to any of the board want to take a position on. Uh, these are for Wednesday night's town meeting. Uh, the first one is the Burlington, uh, I, IFF firefighter's contract. We've, uh, gone over the details of that contract with the board, uh, in executive session. John, uh, lays out, um, the details of the deal in the backup to this, um, backups to this agenda item here. And, uh, to date, the, the fire union has approved their end of the contract. So all we need is for the board to, uh, approve the contract tonight, and then we'll be bringing it to town meeting on Wednesday. So that would be Article five.
Okay. Gentlemen, any, uh, questions, comments on Article five? Okay.
I don't have a general town meeting question. If that's okay?
Sure.
Was it started seven or seven-thirty? Cause I've heard conflicting seven. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I wanted to be sure.
Uh, no, yeah, can I be there on time? Won't say anything.
Everyone's laughing.
Paul, on to the next one.
Uh, the next article is, uh, Article nine, Part-Time Compensation Plan. Uh, this is for a few employees, um, that work, their work positions are classified as less than twenty hours per week. There are very modest adjustments, uh, made. Um, the wage adjustment is just about a two-and-a-half percent increase to part-time rates, uh, which is consistent with what, um, our collective bargaining units have agreed to for the year. Uh, and the total amount that this will cost is, is about eighty-four hundred dollars approximately, and that eighty-two forty-four. Uh, and this funding comes, as well as the fire contract, comes, uh, from our negotiated settlements account that we budgeted for at the beginning of the year. So we're not talking about any additional dollars to fund these articles. Uh, this is money that we already set aside for this purpose, and we're, and we'll be moving it into the department's lines. Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Can one vote be taken for both Articles in five and nine, or have you got two separate? Uh, whatever your preference, um, we will need to sort of know if there's any differences between the two votes, though. This is simply done to report to town meeting when, uh, the moderator asks us how to the board vote on these.
Yeah. So, gentlemen, then I'll ask the question, um, if, if you're comfortable taking both of these in one vote. No objection? Okay.
In that case, I'm making a motion. We approve Warren Article five and Warren Article nine as presented for the town meeting in September.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, just point out that the board already voted, voted favorably on Article four, the police station feasibility, as well as, uh, Article ten, which is, uh, Melissa's article to create the new zoning code for the one-twenty-eight district.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are moving to, uh, Article six forty-two, Public Hearing for Legal Seafood, the Burlington Mall Alteration of Price. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. There's no motion needed for that. I will need a motion, uh, made to approve the notice as written, as advertised.
Seconded.
Okay, moved to second. Uh, sorry, Lynn, do the roll call vote that? No? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Okay. Uh, Legal Seafood, Burlington Mall Alteration of Price. Should we have, uh, folks here for that? Donna, is that you?
Can I have one down?
A little, little quiet, but yes.
Okay, um, how's this? This better?
Better, yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Donna Cruz, and I'm, uh, a, uh, panelist, go with in the program of, specifically, the seafood. I have childhood rights here with me, and we direct our operations. And I have natural also with me, and we direct work with buildings. And this is my location to alter the premises, which includes a, um, renovation of the interior and an addition of forty-three seats. On the other side, um, essentially, it's a four-season patio with fully enclosed. It has operational windows, and if I didn't say it already, we're adding forty-three seats there. And, um, so if you have any questions. Uh, Matt and Charlie are great. They could probably answer more questions if you have them.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, question?
Just a quick question. Is this something that the Alpha House App Committee would have reviewed? Uh, no. Additional, additional seats?
We didn't look at it.
Okay. Chose not to, uh, Mr. Chairman.
It was sent to them.
They reviewed it, they didn't meet on.
I, I looked at it, but I didn't, didn't meet on it. I thought that's what he asked me.
No, I was just, they, you had, uh, made recommendation, that's all.
Yeah, I had no problem with that. Okay, yeah, I didn't meet with that. Okay. Um, Michael, what do you?
Uh, just one question. I, Legal Seafood's been a great tenant in town here for, for quite a while. The additional seating, is that all taking place in the four-season patio area, I guess is my only question.
That's correct. Uh, there's actually a planter box in front of the bump out of the additional seats, um, in a knee wall. So it's, it's completely enclosed. It just has operable windows where the additional seating will be. It's not really a patio. It's, it's a four-season area that, when the weather is nice, will be able to open the windows.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Joe, anything?
No, nothing.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, just curious on the anticipated opening, reopening for, uh, Legals.
As fast as we can.
What?
As fast as we can. Right now, we're under construction.
I did too.
Why not? I thought you said this weekend. Okay, fair enough.
With love this weekend, right?
I would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I guess my only question is, how many seats were there before?
I don't really answer that.
Forty less.
Forty less.
Was it in the back? I didn't.
Total now is three fifty.
Three fifty-five, yeah, so.
Three fifty-five minus forty-three.
Okay. Simple math, right, Paul? Thank you. Things I could have done on my own. Alright, um, gentlemen, any further questions, comments? Okay, seeing as this is a public hearing and I open it to the public, if there is anybody who would like to speak on this matter, please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing has been, uh, made and seconded. Uh, this is a roll call vote, right?
I don't think we have a roll call.
Have we not roll called a, a, a public hearing before? Am I just going crazy? I'm going crazy.
Someone's online.
Oh, alright, maybe that's what it was. Alright, well, in any case, because I'm having a senior moment, apparently. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero to close the public hearing. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm excited.
Uh, Legal Seafood.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Alright, folks, you're all set. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
See you this weekend.
Alright.
Time to go open this weekend.
I've got a lot to do.
We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, six forty-three.
Retirement and Possession Play. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and thank you to the board. Uh, as you know, we've been, um, in communication with the board over the past several years about the, uh, let's call it the aging of our workforce. Uh, we've been hit with, uh, quite a few retirements over the past several years. And, um, as the board is aware, uh, we'll be saying goodbye to, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Mike Patterson at the end of the calendar year, as well as, uh, Public Works Director, John Sanchez. And I just wanted to update the board, um, that, uh, my intention, uh, would be to appoint Assistant Fire Chief, uh, Andrew Conde to be the Fire Chief. Uh, he's done a great job. Uh, we've worked very closely with him over the past few years, and, uh, we're very pleased with that pick. And in terms of, uh, replacing John Sanchez, uh, we do have, uh, some very talented individuals from within the department. So my recommendation is going to be to post that job internally, uh, just, uh, to understand, uh, who within the department may have interest and whether they meet the qualifications, and we'll take it from there. So just an update for the board at this point in time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Alright, uh, six forty-four, uh, Acceptance Approval of Donations. Uh, Mike?
So, um, as some of you may or may not know, the high school varsity baseball team plays behind Francis Wyman. And, um, it's been a sore subject for a lot of the parents. It's kind of an inferior field. Some of the, the other parents of the team snicker at our, our parents when they come, and, uh, they just want to try and, they want to try and do something to, um, to improve it. And they're gonna do some improvements. Uh, they want to build, um, new bullpen and, um, a new, um, batting cage area. And if you've ever been behind, um, Francis Wyman during, uh, the fall, or the spring, you have the youth soccer fields behind it, and all the kids walk into soccer, and the pitcher's warming up. It's always, uh, kind of dangerous. Uh, there's no delineation between where the kids are warming up and the kids and parents walking to soccer. So, uh, knowing about some of the issues they've had with the baseball field, I got involved, and I want to thank, um, the American Legion Post in town, um, Narblum, and, um, Reiman Bronstein for their donations, and this is just a vote to, uh, approve the release of the funds.
Accept them and then, then release them?
Accept them, then release them.
Thank you.
We thank all those, um, three companies and Legion Post for their, for their, uh, their generosity. It's, uh, it makes some happy kids and parents, um, that'll, some improvement there at least will help out with the situation. Hopefully, uh, you know, they're doing the field feasibility study with the schools. We can kind of get to the bottom of where our needs are as far as athletic fields, um, are in town. So I'm looking forward to the results of that study.
Yeah. Well, thank you for taking the time and, and, uh, you know, working to help raise those funds. Uh, gentlemen, any questions on this?
I just, one comment. I just love when the people and the residents and the businesses, um, come to the rescue, so to speak, of, of a need, and they just step right up to the plate, no pun intended, to, um, help out. And, and I also want to thank those, uh, other, those donations, uh, those who donated as well.
Those very familiar names. We hear them every time. They're, they're usually the ones that, uh, step up, um, to the plate, as Jim said. Whenever, uh, there's, uh, an organization in need of some support there. So thanks again to all of those.
We really hit a home run with this one.
I have to follow.
Cut, cut his mic. Gonna cut his mic. With the puns.
Should we round the bases ahead for home and take a vote on this one?
Joe, anything you want to add?
Joe, you're on deck.
Don't you, don't you?
Joe, you're on deck. Joe, you're on deck. Go ahead.
Alright, gentlemen, there's no further baseball puns to be made. Uh, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept the donation as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize expenditure offset donation for upgrades to the high school baseball field.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Alright, that takes us to our end of evening report, subcommittees. Mr. Españo?
Sure, I'll go first. Uh, this Saturday had the, uh, pleasure to, uh, attend a Eagle Scout ceremony. Uh, it was held up in Pala, New Hampshire for a young gentleman in town named Lucas Myers. And Lucas, um, is a Troop Five-Eleven Eagle here in town, and as a Troop Five-Eleven Eagle myself, it was very special to go. His project was, um, making bat houses in Mary Cummings Park to, uh, improve the habitats for our Bat Mary's Cummings Park. And it was a great event, um, with his friends, his family, and his troop there. And, uh, it was good to kind of get back in touch with Troop Five-Eleven, and I told him to reach out, and I'd like to see if I can, you know, give him a hand with any, you know, voluntary opportunities they may have, because it's, uh, my home troop, and that means a lot. Uh, second, I want to mention that the, I'm the subcommittee, uh, the liaison to the DAC, the Disability Access Commission, and we have an open position, um, on the DAC committee. We're looking for, um, a new member. So if anyone is interested, uh, please get in touch with our, uh, Select Board Office, and we can walk you through, uh, processing that. Lastly, I want to give a, a shout out to, uh, the Mama Bear Effect for winning a great, um, event yesterday, uh, at sixty-one Center Street. It was the Badges and Bases, uh, fundraising, um, event. It was the Burlington Police Department against Burlington Fire Department, and it ended up in a, uh, twelve, twelve tie, even though I was hoping they'd go to an eighth extra inning, but I think the guys were, uh, all set at that point. Uh, it was a great event, a lot of families, a lot of raffles, a lot of money raised for a great cause. And if you're not familiar with the Mama Bear Effect, it's a, uh, they were celebrating their tenth year anniversary. It's a Burlington organization, and they raise awareness, uh, for child sexual abuse. And they do, I mean, Burlington, I'm always so impressed with all these great organizations we have in town, homegrown, that do so many great things behind the scenes. So very thankful for them and, uh, the police and fire departments for giving their time on a Sunday when the exact same time when the Patriots are playing, uh, to, to play a fun game and raise some fun, our funds and have some fun. So it's a great, uh, weekend overall in, uh, here in Burlington. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Mike? Uh, no, sir, not tonight. Okay. Jim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with regards to the Sculpture Park, we, because of the success of the Ice Cream Social we had about a month ago, we are attempting to put together some sort of adult-oriented event. Uh, it's still in the infancy. We're just starting to talk about it now. We're meeting next week, and we'll be talking about that, um, you know, over the course of the next few meetings. Um, Sunday was a great day in Burlington. We had the badges and ba, uh, bases and badges, uh, badges and bases. Um, it was a great event. Uh, there were some phenomenal plays made during that game. Um, but I think one of the highlights was the, uh, MC of, of the game. I think he did a fantastic job. Uh, Selectman Españo, uh, was our, our commentator, so to speak. But, uh, no, and then after that, we had the volley. A very fun event. Uh, the rain held off for most part, but again, just well attended. Um, and one of the, and as I told the organizers, this is one of our favorite events of the year. We love coming to that. Um, it's just a great celebration. That's about, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, yeah, just to touch on, I mean, the volley was wonderful. Uh, for now, the fifth or sixth year, took the wife and kids and, um, absolute blast. All the kids got, uh, Henna tattoos on their hands, and they were all, you know, trying not to touch it while it dried. So, you know, it was like swatting flies to keep them off of that. Um, that, the energy there is infectious.
It is.
I mean, truly, like, you, you, you get to the common, and you just, you can feel how excited everybody is, and that is, I think, is what, in part, makes it so much fun.
We didn't do it this year, but if any group can get us up to dance, that's a pretty powerful group.
It's true. The rain, I'll, I'll say the rain saved us this year. Because they were trying to get to the program, so the rain didn't come.
The happiness is just infectious, like the smiles and the, the dancing and the music. You can't not get into it. It's just, just a fun, warm afternoon. It's just a fun, warm afternoon.
It's an absolute blast, and all the kids who practice their dances and then come, you know, all dressed up, and they perform in front of everybody. I mean, it's just wonderful. So just a huge shout-out to the IAB and everybody for that.